It's nine o'clock and I'll call this special meeting to order. Our first order of business today is a public hearing. The public hearing is for the purpose of considering an application to be submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce for small city community development block grant funds under the CDBG-CV category. And what I'll do is, the order will be, I'll open the public hearing, have the city representative explain the application and the grant process, then open for public to express their interest or concerns, then we'll close the hearing and open it for discussion from the commission. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing and turn the microphone over to Lacy.
Thank you, Mayor. So this grant is the one that we have spoke about in two previous meetings. It's the CDBG-CV grant through the Kansas Department of Commerce. And we will be submitting the grant application this afternoon after all the documentation is signed at the close of the public hearing. We will likely find out if we are a recipient of this grant within 14 days. At that point in time, if we are, if we're given the grant, we will be responsible for coming up with a program to get the word out to businesses in our area. One thing that we have already done is Tricia with Montgomery County Action Council has created a Survey Monkey survey to disseminate to all the businesses. And basically, it gives the CDBG requirements. It lays them out so that businesses can easily determine if they may be eligible. There are LMI requirements for their employees. And what that means is that to qualify, 51% of the businesses' employees must be, must meet LMI, low moderate income requirements. And that is not just the wages that that company pays that employee, but it is total household income. So they will have to get some information from their employees to make sure that they That is the most restrictive requirement in this grant. The goal of the grant is to retain those low-income jobs in the city. Are there any questions?
We'll go to questions after we close the hearing.
Okay.
So are you covered?
Yes.
Okay, then, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for any public comment. Is there any citizens that have questions or would like to express their opinion concerning the grant application? Were there any questions online, Kelly?
No, I didn't see.
If there's no questions, and due to the lag between actually what's going on here and the Facebook broadcast, that's why I kind of paused to allow response for them to catch up. So if there are no questions, then I will close the public hearing and open the session to Commissioner questions or comments. So Commissioner Yussisi, do you have any questions for Lacy?
Yes, thank you. Lacy, I do have a question. I understand the grant total is for $400,000. $300,000 which is for the businesses and meeting the LMI requirements. And the $100,000 is for the, to assist in food pantries, basically. So is this a case where we either receive the amount that we're requesting, or is it possible that maybe we not receive one, but receive the other? Is that a possibility?
That is a possibility. I attended a Q&amp;A session with the state and they did note that if for some reason they thought that you, you did not properly justify your need for the full amount, that they could grant lesser amounts.
Okay. All right. And if I understood right, as far as the food pantry part, that we meet the qualifications as a community for that, so...
That is correct.
So our chances for that particular would look pretty good on the surface. I mean, as good as anything else.
I would hope so.
As far as anything else. Okay. All right. Thank you, Lacy.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, thank you. As part of this motion, we are granting the mayor the right to sign on our behalf the related forms and applications for the city. One of them is the application itself. One is also an attestation of some kind or another regarding demolition and rehabilitation of housing. Is that...
That is just a standard boilerplate form that CDBG requires for all of their applications. I realize it looks like some of the forms that have to be turned in are not applicable to this specific grant, but they, it's what is required on all of their grants.
Well, thank you. I guess I have a question for Mayor Confession. Is you okay signing that attestation as well?
If I knew how it would be applicable or would not obligate us to other conditions, that's a question.
So have we attested in this way to other CDBG grants that we have applied for?
It is my understanding that we have. I have not been here during a time where we've applied for another CDBG grant, so I have not presented one to be, to be signed. But from my understanding, this is required for all CDBG grants.
Do you recall which grant that was, where it was in the packet?
It was at the, was the final few pages of the attached documents, and it was a...
I believe it's called the anti-displacement form.
Pardon me?
The anti-displacement form.
Yeah, anti-displacement form, I believe.
As I recall, Leonard, it followed immediately the document you have in your, in your right hand.
This one here?
So that one right there that you're beginning to pick up.
Yeah, I saw that and...
Basically, did you ask Susan about that specific disclaimer? If it didn't apply, if it could be modified, or we have to use a specific form?
I did ask. I thought that a lot of these attachments were not applicable to the grant, so I did confirm that all of these attachments would need to be filled out. And her response was just, you know, yes, these are the boilerplate legal documents that CDBG requires with all of their applications.
So just, pardon me, one additional question and then I'll yield. But this, because these grant monies are not going towards the demolition or rehabilitation of housing, is there likely to be, just, it's likely to, or it's reasonable to assume that we will be able to comply with this particular document associated with these particular funds?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the form that we were discussing, item number two, and it says, "A general location on a map and approximate number of dwelling units by size, number of bedrooms that will be demolished or converted to use other than a low and moderate income dwelling unit as a direct result of assisted activity." So I think since we don't have a map locating any number of units...
The number of units would be assumed to be zero, then?
Right.
Yes.
So I think with that statement, if that's the way we would interpret it, then it would be acceptable to sign it. It's not relevant to any of the data that we're submitting.
Correct.
And since we've identified specifically business, application of the grant funds, and food bank, I think we've tied our part down. And it does come that even though, what we're basically doing today is approving the application, we will receive, say we do receive notice of the funds, and at that time, we find it's committed us to something beyond what we understood, I think at that time, we should reject the funds.
Correct, you could.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think one of the things that is unusual, that I guess I considered it unusual, we're having an economic development grant that's being funded by HUD. Typically, the tradition is HUD is directly dealing with housing. But yet, looking at the low to moderate income that they're identifying, it does, in that sense, seem appropriate to come from HUD, because that's primarily HUD's concern, is low and moderate income families, they're just going from addressing strictly housing, I think, to the needs of paying bills. That group has to have the money and have to have the job secure, so I think that's where the funds are coming from. And definitely, you look at statistics, and this would be very beneficial to the employees in Independence. And definitely, the food banks. The food banks, are those just the ones that are in existence now, or does this open up for a new one to be established?
You could use funds to establish something new.
So the, the business portion is for profit only?
For-profit businesses that were established prior to March 1st, 2020, and they have to have been negatively impacted by COVID.
And the food bank or food entities, that opens up to nonprofit organizations also?
Yes.
And say, would that include a church that has a food pantry being able to apply?
Yes.
To, okay. So the information that you submitted to us last night was your basic guidelines. What we had in the packet was the application that we submit to HUD for the block grant, but the application information that you submitted, I didn't have a chance to go through it real detailed.
What I submitted last night was the narrative of the grant application, and I actually also took screenshots of the application, since it is an online form, so that you could see a complete version of what would be submitted online, including at the bottom, I listed the applicable attachments that we will have to submit on the online portal.
Then for the actual application for the funds, will HUD furnish applications, or do you have to develop a standard application form for businesses in the food banks?
They didn't give that much guidance. They were a little ambiguous when this question was asked on our calls, but it is my understanding that they will provide some sort of form or starting point for us.
Okay. So all this is happening really quick. If the application is due today?
Yes. Well, it's, it's an ongoing submission process, but it's a first-come, first-served grant, so the earlier we are able to submit our application, the better chances we have.
Okay, so the notification day begins at the time you submit?
Correct.
So, okay, it's not like a deadline, and then 14 days from that deadline?
Nope.
So this is going to progress quite rapidly. 14 days from today, you have notice of receipt of the money?
Yes.
Then you have to develop your applications. Then how long to distribute the funds?
I don't recall. I believe it was 60 to 90 days, I don't remember which, after, after we grant funds to an entity, they, basically, once we start granting funds, I believe we have to have granted all of the monies received within, I believe it was 60 days.
Okay. Okay, so we should see an immediate impact on...
Mm-hmm, yes.
For the businesses, okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Commission, is there any further questions?
I'm good.
I'm good, Leonard, thank you.
If not, then I'll call for a vote, or call for a motion, excuse me.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution certifying legal authority, an authorization, to apply for the CDBG-CV grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce, and for the mayor to sign all relating forms and applications, and for city staff to submit such documentation to the state.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Lacy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, items for commission action. Consider authorizing electric to be installed at the parking lot located at the southeast corner of 8th and Chestnut for the farmer's market and other community activities. And David?
Hey, Mayor, excuse me. The commission recently approved moving the farmer's market from Myrtle Street to the 8th Street parking lot. And at the farmer's market, they do at times need some power. They often have live music by some local citizens that provide that, PA system, and just some other incidentals where they need some power. So there's an alley there which creates safety issues. So we've been researching this, and Evergy has stepped up to the plate and is willing to donate a pole for us, which is $2,000 that they're willing to set that. What we're working on now is seeing if we can get some assistance in setting the meter set. We have one estimate, but we believe we have somebody that potentially could do this for less. The high is $1,200, but we think we can get it done in kind for, I'm not going to say half, but less than that. We're visiting with some people. So we would like permission to seek some quotes on that, and/or however the commission feels we should proceed as far as providing that. We feel this not only provides for farmer's market, but potentially other community activities that could occur there. Potentially, we could provide electricity during Neowalla and get some money for vendors that need to put trailers there. I mean, there's some different options that this could be utilized for. And in future plans, potentially, you guys may even consider doing something to improve that plaza. I don't know. But that's kind of where we're at, and we wanted to get your permission on if we should proceed, or how we should proceed with this project.
David?
Yes, sir.
Years ago, there were meter loops installed at various locations, one over there by what formerly was the Blockbuster Building and its office complex now. And there was a 320 amp single-phase meter loop installed on one of those poles in the parking lot. And then when the city went through and redid, we redid those metering points, and they were placed at various locations in the alleys. So that caused all those previous built meter loops to be removed, because there was one by the old water tower also, so...
Yes, yep.
So, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And that's an easy fix, because that Hendrix cable is already in the alley. All they need to do is tap onto it and tap onto the visor.
Yeah, when they were there yesterday, they didn't...
Yeah, it's a, it's a no-brainer. It's just getting the meter loop built.
Yep.
Yep.
How, how will the panel be metered? Will that be separate, or is that tied in with our lighting or...
It will be, it will be a separate meter. In fact, for Evergy to put the pole there for free of charge, I have to provide him with what we call a 911 address, and it'll be a separate meter bill that Lacy receives at the clerk's office. So it'll be off of usage. And that's why we wanted to make sure whatever meter set we put there is lockable, that we can shut it off and, and control who's accessing that electricity.
With farmer's market, you know, I guess I originally had the idea that it was part of Main Street, their function or their direction, or Chamber. I know we're not talking about a large sum of money, but we always talk about partnering, but the partnering, it would be good to see contributions to solve the issue from...
And I did reach out to them, and that's, excuse me, where April is working on potentially getting a lot of this donated. So we are working that avenue, and I just didn't know from you guys what you were comfortable with as far as the amount of money we put towards that project. If we do get it, you know, if we just pay for it, it's about $1,200 bucks. I mean, but if it's donated, I don't know if that's $500 for the equipment, and they're donating their, so are, would you want that split several ways, or what the acceptable amount of money for us to spend would be for the commission?
Yeah, I think that, and the only reason even to hesitate at anything is the unknown of where we're going to be with the COVID.
Right, yes.
And I know we can't unspend what we spend, and...
Right.
You know, even though we're looking at a small amount of money, it's almost sending the wrong message to the public if we're saying we're concerned about our funds and yet we'll...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Spend money here. That was...
That's why it's our hope that we'll get most of it. I mean, we'll just pay for the actual parts and the labor we...
I know, music and the entertainment, I guess, the farmer's market is fun, but it's not essential, and...
Yes.
I just, you know, it's kind of that mixed message of we're watching our spending, but now going in.
Yes, I understand.
Commissioner Hayes?
On the image that I have in front of me, the pole seems to be encroaching on a parked car there. Is that private parking at that point, and is that car going to be displaced?
I, my circle's probably a little big. We're just going to put it there. We wanted, you know, there's a pole in that alley that's everybody in town hits, so we wanted it in the grass area and to where cars could still make left and right turns in the alley. So it's just going to be in that approximate northeast corner of that grass lot that we own, but kind of back away so it's not encroaching the cars or trucks' ability to turn there in the parking lot.
Is that a private parking spot, or is that, are they parking on city property?
That is public parking, that is public parking, but we're going to, we're not going to be close to that. We're going to be probably about 10 feet away from it. My circle's big. We're just going to be in that general area on the grass, in the grass area.
Yeah, the grass area is city...
City property.
Property. It's not really a designated parking area if somebody just happened to...
Yeah.
Somebody happened to be there when we took the picture, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, that is an old picture. And before the city owned that, there used to be a house there that we demolished, and then the city purchased the property. Before then, one of the businesses, he used to park there on that gravel. That business has since closed, and we now own the property.
So that takes me, I guess, back to the, maybe some of the original, or the previously mentioned concerns, is that it's expedient to put it there. It seems like a logical place to put it, given what we know about the farmer's market today. But you also implied that it could be available for future uses, which is part of my question, and that is the utility of that green space there, and how it might best be serviced by a utility pole and power availability. Is that, does this play into those longer plans for the use of that property well, or is it going to possibly interfere with future uses? Let's say we expand the parking, just expand the parking lot, then that would put this post in the middle of the parking spot, our parking places, and something we have to work around in the future. Would it be more, or easier to work around in the future, should we put it on a different corner or in a different spot so that there's an unobstructed, it doesn't serve as an obstruction to expansion of that parking lot or activities in that vicinity?
That location was actually picked by Evergy, because they can service that pole from the, in your picture, there's kind of a dumpster and a light pole there. That's where they're going to bring their power from. That way they, and Louis would probably know more, that way they don't have to connect into the, it's already there, and not mess with that primary stuff running down the alley.
They just tap onto that insulated Hendrix cable that runs down the alley of that, so, and it's easy, accessible for the utility. And like I said, even in places where we've had to relocate services or something that's changed for a customer, we've even had them put barriers up to protect something that was already there prior to them, an expansion or something, we've had them put barriers up so they don't run into our pad mount transformers or damage our equipment, so, and we request that from time to time when businesses or developments expand, to give us some protection for our equipment, because it's easier to put a barrier up than to, for us to go out and try to relocate something that we put in to provide, you know, primary electric service to customers, so...
Thank you.
So the, the pole will be set for the power drop, then the panel will have to be set on a separate rack or similar to the...
They're giving us the pole. That's the $2,000 donation. We can set the meter set on this pole.
Okay, and the panel can go on the pole too?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, we won't have to do, at the fountain for the power there, we had to have a...
Separate.
Frame built to set it.
Yeah, no, they're going to donate this pole to us, which will allow us to do everything right there on that pole.
Okay, so it's kind of going to be like a construction meters set that you'll have a power pole, the meter and the panel there?
Yeah, we could disconnect it and remove it later if we need to.
Okay, kind of a temporary service.
Yes, exactly.
That's, if I believe, if I understand right, that's part of the requirements anyway. Now, if you're setting a meter, a meter installation, you also have to have a disconnect?
Yes, yep.
It's got to be part of the package.
Right, yep.
There are some comments on Facebook. Would you like me to read those to you?
Yes.
Carolyn Torrance said, "No, it was not, it was not originally part of Main Street nor Chamber. It could be used for so many city functions, not just farmer's market, and please remember this space was part of the city improvement plan for gathering space."
Yeah, which is all based upon available funds to completely, complete that. So what we're really looking at is a temporary meter set that would be set here. So what, what we're hearing is for sure that Evergy will set the pole.
Evergy is willing to set the pole and do all of that, donating that towards the farmer's market. And I'm going to do my best with April's help, Lisa, Lacy, to see how much of the other we can get donated. And I'm gonna do my best with April's help, Lisa, Lacy, to see how much of the other we can get donated to get the service set put in. But ultimately, the city would be responsible for the monthly meter charge
Right.
of the use of the electricity, and we would control who would have access to it.
And, uh, when we were talking yesterday, Kelly, about, um, lighting, if, if we decided that we needed a, a light, would that go off of that meter or how does, how are we charged on our street lights or area lights?
They add them to our, our invoice, like we just did the one at the gazebo. We put a, a light up there and they just add it to our additional what we pay every month for street lights and things like that.
So it would be a pole that we could add, um, sight lighting if we've
Yes.
We desire to.
Which, that would probably be a good location for a light.
Right, it, it is dark back in that corner.
Yeah, on, on that meter loop installation, I, I believe the only thing that Westar, uh, other than the pole, which they're gonna donate would be the actual, um, meter base where the meter plugs in. They've always provided that, but the city bit would be responsible for the metal pipe, the weatherhead, uh, the wire coming in down, tying in on the line side and then the load side coming out to the disconnect and then the grounding part. So that would be the pieces necessary that the, that the, um, city or electrician would provide, but Westar would just provide the meter base itself.
Okay.
Unless that's changed. I've been away for a while.
I don't think it's changed. No. Because they all go out there when they're getting ready to do a job and pick it up.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions?
No.
So with this
I believe Brent has a question.
Do you have a microphone? Okay, good.
I just have a question. Well, it seems like several years ago, Sesna had made type, a verbal type commitment to do some improvement to that property. And there was even renderings, I think, that were shown at maybe First Friday or something when they sponsored it. Um, is that off the table? Have they, or was it a different location than that? I'm pretty certain it was that Eighth Street parking lot. And there was a stage rendering and there was some landscape that had been done there, and it was gonna be called like Sesna Plaza. Has, have they, is, does anybody recall any of that? That's all I'm asking.
I think we had, um, Doug Pickard with Indigo Designs did some preliminary designs, uh, for the plaza, a, a potential plaza, and there were three concepts for it. I think the city paid and because he was also looking at some wayfaring signage and, uh, some planner or bench boxes around for trees downtown and all in that one project. He provided those sketches then and I don't, I don't recall
I think text drawn, um, well, that's about the time they donated the money for the stadium, wasn't it? So I don't know, maybe you might be thinking about that project. So I think they were involved with that project, but I don't remember them being involved with the plaza project. So.
Yeah, and I think that's the, the concept that, uh, Carolyn was referring to, which is had the design, but it was never placed into a budget to develop. It's always seemed there was something
We had cost estimates, but they were pretty high and it was just a preliminary design. It was never finalized, just kind of what you could put on that property.
Right. So for us today, we've got before us the, the donated pole from Evergy. We have, um, a project scope that could be, uh, a maximum not to exceed of one thousand two hundred dollars. So for us, uh, if there's no further discussion, I, I don't wanna cut. Commissioners, you have anything else to add?
I might add that, uh, that it's, uh, it's important to understand that a gathering place in this particular spot seems very logical. And if we develop that in that way, it seems very rational that we would get the money out of it. It's just that there is no, uh, plan at this time to develop that as a gathering place. It has great accessibility. It has great, uh, adjacent parking. It seems like a very good place to continue to develop this idea that when it is not being utilized for one purpose, that it should be thought of as something that we could utilize regularly and perhaps with some fee attached, offset the costs of ongoing, uh, maintenance of this pole. However, it's, because that plan's not in place, it's, uh, it's muddying the waters at this point in time, but
Yes, I would agree.
So nonetheless, it's, uh, it seems like a very logical place. Gathering places at this time tend to, uh, enhance the, uh, the stability and efficacy of downtowns of like ours. So, uh, it's just something that, um, hopefully soon, we would see some kind of additional activities in that spot and we would be open to them.
Yep.
It's also highly visible with being the highway traffic going by that spot, so people from out of town may stop and see the activities and stop and partake, or if it was in another area, they may not see what's going on. So that's another advantage to this location.
I think we should consider that this is just a, a temporary location for use as it is, because as you bring out, future design's gonna bring in two, uh, additional factors, a two-hundred amp panel mounted on a pole. You're limited to a couple outlets and extension cords. That to really service a development, it, it should be more permanently mounted on, on a wall with remote, uh, circuits that you don't have to come back to this location with extension cords. Uh, the, the cords are gonna, would create problems for a complete development of the area. So I think your, your point is well taken, that we need to look at, uh, the whole concept for a future design that we don't tire self.
Yeah, in, indeed. What I, perhaps what I need to also clarify is that in the scheme of things, in the grand scheme of things, we're, uh, we're we do have two thousand dollars worth of, uh, free, uh, goods and services on the table in front of us right now that we were more or less matching with, uh, about a thousand dollars. So it's like a two-for-one match with Evergy at this point to place this, uh, pole and the service at this time. And whether that's a, enough of an, of an incentive to take advantage of it for the short term, I would, I would say yes, but I'll see how the motion plays out.
So you're saying you feel it would be well worth an investment at this time?
We've spent thou, a thousand dollars and gotten a lot less.
Definitely. So that's what, looking at, at the way we go about a motion, since there is a potential to, um, have the cost less, I guess, first in, in considering that we consider the, the option now as benefit to solve a, a immediate problem, not long-term, so, um.
Lyndsay, could I make a comment?
Yeah.
Even with them setting the pole, uh, and donating that, um, that's basically, it, it can be temporary. I mean, if, if plans change later on and we wanna go to a more permanent type of an installation, there's no problem, uh, taking that riser off a pole and pulling the pole and filling the hole in. We, we do that from time to time. So, or Westar does, so that's, that's, I mean, anything that they set doesn't necessarily have to be permanent. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think you could use a pole too to feed the service down and go underground to
Sure.
a new location for a larger panel that could sub-feed remote stations around the development to sight lighting or whatever's developed. So, you know, I think the, uh, the problem is to consider this as the solution for the site. If we look at it as step one, to meet an immediate need and keep it in that perspective, and then look that what we're really being asked is to authorize the agreement with Evergy to set the pole and permission for the staff to secure installation of power pole, meter and disconnect not to exceed, uh, one thousand two hundred dollars. That way it gives us a leeway if you can negotiate less
Yes.
that we've authorized the action.
And I think we can.
And we can move forward, so.
We do have one additional Facebook comment from Amanda Mel. You could charge a fee like you would any of the shelter houses to cover the cost of electricity.
And that's a thought too. Uh, if the vendors are now wanting power, that you could increase the, the fee to set up your stand, to, to supplement it, also then that money could go to future development of the site, although it would be small, at least it's a start and maybe even secure the existing parking lot now for limited activities in addition, so, yeah, that's a thought. So, ready, I'm ready for a motion, are you?
I'll make that motion, Mayor. Uh, I move to authorize Evergy to install the pole uh, that we've been talking about, an installation of service by a city licensed electrician at Eighth and Chestnut, not to exceed twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? Kelly has shared this additional documentation for the next
Yes, just copies of the packet.
Okay.
I didn't know if you had copies, so I made extra copies.
Okay. Okay, the next item is items for discussion. Consider discussing future capital projects and any other related items. So I believe for this portion of the commission meeting, we've been asked to relocate over to the, uh, tables, two of us at the table, one at the, the end of this table.
I'll take this position.
Okay, and, uh, then that way we'll be able to follow the, uh, the illustrations. There will be microphones for us to use, so. Uh, if you'll allow us a few moments to relocate and let's see, so is this in addition to what was in the packet?
That I just printed out in case we, I didn't know exactly the direction that this meeting would take, how much detail we would get into. Um, so that is just if we veer off into talking about specific street projects. This has been presented once before as, you know, kind of the, the projects that we've got, um, in the queue, basically, what we've identified as, as the next set of mill and overlay projects, and it includes some cost estimates. And the, the maps are, are those locations plotted. So just supplement for discussion.
Okay, just wanna make sure I have everything with us as we, we relocate.
Yes, and same with, I printed out a copy of the strategic planning session that we had at the beginning of the year. Um, just in case you hadn't
Supplemented.
looked at it in the last five months or so, so that we could make sure that we're staying, um, with our
That's daily reading material.
And that was also included in that report I gave you last time on the street plan.
And this is just a large scale?
That's all the same projects, just in different versions. That's just the larger version, like it's, it's easier to read the labels on the big one.
Right.
I also have an electronic version if we end up wanting to put it on the screen. Yep.
Commissioners, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, Lacy?
Mayor, I, I'd like a little bit of guidance on how you would like the flow of this meeting to go. Um, I know that we're, we're here for discussion purposes, uh, but if I were to go in to detail of this file at length, we would be here all day. So are there certain highlights that you would like to, to make sure that we cover? I, I would anticipate that we are mainly focused on 2021 with the upcoming budget, um, sessions. And that we would mainly focus on kind of what we had in our strategic plan as far as, you know, monies we are, are allocating towards street or infrastructure or economic development and those types of larger projects. Is, is what I'm anticipating that, that you would like to start with and move through first, but please let me know if that is not the case.
I think limiting it or beginning to highlight the 2021 budget, which we're getting ready to consider, um, I think maybe, um, like a summary, you know, not extensive detail, but going through, we could talk about the projects that you've listed for each department. There, there, you don't have to read each line. We could kinda scan them and then kinda go from there. I don't
Okay.
Think we, Commissioners, what's your desire?
Uh, my, my desire is to focus on the 2021 budget and to, uh, if there is significant variation year to year, that we would look at that.
Okay, excellent.
Commissioner Susie?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Let's focus on 2021.
Okay. So what we have up on the screen now is a summary of, of everything, all capital projects and what I have included for, for transfers. So transfers to a, for example, enterprise fund to the general fund or from the specially used sales tax fund to some project fund. All of those types of transfers are included in here, including, um, debt service transfers as well. So the 2020 column shows what we had budgeted in our 2020 budget, and then 2021 is this column here. A lot of, a lot of what we talked about in our strategic planning session was knowing what we would need down the road in terms of maintenance and, and upgrades to facilities or streets and making sure that we are consciously, you know, looking forward
Last time we, we talked, you gave us an update on what you had, the effect of the COVID-19, uh, was going to be projected. Now, as we look through these, are you setting a goal of what we need to address for 2021, and then as we determine, we could come back and cut them, or have you already cut those out of the projects?
I have not cut anything currently. I'd like to look at this as the, the full picture, and when we have data points to see where we're at, um, we can scale back from there.
Good. And I think, I think that's good for us to look at that manner, and then just as long as we're moving forward, that we're clear that this is going to be modified as you determine exactly what the impact will be.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got to know where we're going in. And, and that with the airport, um, some of the, the work out there, I'm not for sure how it's divided between departments, but I noticed the, the parking lot going up to the, um, terminal, the entrance and the parking area is in real poor condition. And is that a airport project or is that a street project?
The airport, um, the majority of the airport is annexed in except for the businesses. So actually those, those streets would be city streets.
Okay. So if we're looking at repairs or a melon overlay or removal and replacement of, that would be a street project?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, because we need to look at that, including it in for 2021 into the, the projects.
We'll look at that and modify the map.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, please, please interrupt if you guys have, have questions. Okay, so we'll, we'll just kind of go through the air, or go through the different departments and, and take a look at 20 and, and kind of a comparison of 2021. And if there are certain projects that jump out at you, please, um, let me know and stop me, and we'll discuss it in more detail. So for the airport, as you can see, um, we, we do kind of beef up the, the funding towards the air, for the airport in 2021, um, it went from about 105,000 budgeted for 2020 to, um, 169,000 in 2021. And currently that is because we have a terminal upgrade budgeted over two years out there at the airport. Animal control, we have just, um, some, a truck needs, so some equipment needs at, in animal control. Building D, we typically, we have just budgeted $5,000 in, in capital outlay for, for building D year to year. There are no specific projects that are, are, are listed in those numbers, though. The cemetery has, uh, one more year of a lease payment for a backhoe, and then the rest is equipment and, uh, facility and grounds needs.
Lacy, uh, the cemetery wall, we've budgeted money past years to do repairs, and we haven't.
That, that is actually what that $20,000, uh, it, it goes every other year, so the, the project grounds line is for the cemetery wall.
Okay. So, the project grounds?
Just a quick question then about the wall. Uh, were those $20,000 or have those $20,000 been planned to be expended this year, or have they been, uh, delayed?
Delayed. All capital projects that do not directly relate to safety or continuing, uh, operations or services have been delayed until at least the end of June.
Were there plans in place, then?
We hadn't, we hadn't gotten quotes or anything like that. We had not moved forward with that project yet.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is, um, City Hall, which is a large, a large project and, uh, taking up a, a lot of budgeted funds. Um, I don't have anything in there for 2021, but I, I would like some guidance on, on what our plan is for City Hall.
We had a, uh, meeting scheduled with, uh, Trainer HL, and that was put on hold with the pandemic, so we need to get back to looking at that at a work session.
For Facebook.
Scheduling them. Yeah, just seeing how things go the next two or three weeks.
It's, um, may I, um, say that if it's realistic, or I shouldn't say realistic, it's, um, expected then that some expenditure will be made. And, uh, because our budgeting process is going to end sooner than we want it to this year, uh, it's probably my expectation that some value should be put in there, uh, based on the best information we have at the time. So whatever it is that we had as the last working number is probably likely to be what you would base your estimate upon, knowing that that working number is likely to change as we go forward.
Okay.
Lacy?
Yes.
As far as, um, 2020 goes, um, the first phase of that project at City Hall, uh, if I understood right, they're due to be, have that completed, um, by June, by the end of June. Is that still on?
Contract runs through August. Um, but, I mean, they're running a little ahead of schedule. But they had like a 14-month contract, wasn't it, Leonard? And didn't, doesn't end, end actually in August.
I think you're right. I think it is August.
Okay. I know there was a comment made by Trainer, whether it was Ian or Vance, maybe the contractor, that they thought that maybe they might be able to wrap this up by the end of June, first of July, and I didn't know where they were at on the schedule, so.
Yeah, they're, they're working on the windows and things like that now, but they, uh, the meetings we've had, they think that they will, they will get done a little early, but they actually have until August if something happens, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, it's eight weeks out now? Okay, so that's probably going to delay it. They've had a little trouble getting some things in.
David, David said that the window order is currently eight weeks out. Is that right?
Yes. Okay, so it's probably looking more into, um, August then. Okay.
Okay, then the next line on this spreadsheet is the debt service transfer. So this, this would include, um, this is transfers to our bond and interest fund to, to pay for those bonds. And, and Dean had asked a question previously on why the numbers drop off in 2023, and, and I let him know that is just because this is a work in, in progress, and I have not had time to completely update the spreadsheet, uh, going out past 2022. So some items have been left off in the future.
Is the, uh, the debt service transfer, is that from the special use sales tax or is that from general fund?
Let me look. So you can see here, um, it, it's mostly from special use sales tax, but there is some transferred from educational sales tax and some from the water sewer fund.
Okay, so we're not mainly our special, special, excuse me, designated sales tax for debt reduction, and then the, uh, industrial fund is covering that. None of our sales tax that we monitor outside special use is going for that payment.
Correct. And, and this, this summary is helpful to see where our transfers are going and, and what their originating funding source is from. So this first line is the debt service transfers, and you can see, um, the, the breakout between water sewer, special use sales tax, and educational sales tax. So currently the only transfers that the general fund funds is the five mills to capital reserve and then the $50,000 towards condemnations. Do you all prefer to see the funding source? Because we, we can look through this, this summary, um, with the six-year summary, or if you prefer to look at the 2021 summary by funding source, this is what it would look like?
I think the, my question with the debt service, it was, a lot of people have asked.
Okay.
Where that, you know, how that's being paid with our bonds and, you know, just so that we can make sure that there's an understanding, we're not paying with our ad verum taxes.
Correct.
But it is coming from other sources and, and not, uh, I guess it's a special source with, uh, education sales tax and special use. Those were designated where our sales tax that we get outside that just goes to general fund, and we use it for support of, of the city, so.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next section is economic development and transportation. And I, I tried to keep the total monies funded year over year about the same. We've got, um, 2022 will be our last payment for this land lease purchase, and then I have, um, $100,000 in economic development grant disbursement funds, and, um, then $15,000 of strategic planning year over year. And really, I, I tried to be very broad in these categories to give us, um, a, a lot of flexibility. Any questions on that one? Okay, um, moving on to emergency preparedness and, uh, fire EMS. I, I don't have anything scheduled, uh, scheduled specifically in emergency preparedness. However, um, in fire EMS, we are needing to, to replace our, our ambulance, um, a couple of them. So I have that scheduled in 2021 and 2022, and then again in 2024.
Or supplies that we use during the pandemic, is that just going to come out of general fund?
Yes, I mean, those will all be operating costs, yes. And then I will point out on here that there is, um, one grant that we have applied for, uh, for a fire engine, and the grant is for $475,000 and, well, it's for $500,000 and requires a $25,000 match. So that is in there as well. I will point out that this general fund support line item is a transfer from the special use sales tax, uh, back to the general fund for support. So it makes up one and a quarter percent of our estimated, uh, sales tax.
So there's two transfers, one for debt reduction and one for general support from the special use?
Correct.
From the same quarter percent or?
So if we look over here on our transfer summary for special use sales tax, um, you'll, you'll see there's, this is the, the two transfers that we have scheduled out of special use sales tax. It's the, the 714,750 to debt reduction and the 483,750 to general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. In the general fund, we have, um, some technology and computer type upgrades, and then we do have, uh, we, we had a, a letter requesting a comprehensive plan update that is a $100,000 project that I have split out between two years. And, and Kelly, do you want to talk about that at all?
Um, on which one? On the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
The planning commission, of course, uh, had the letter that was in your packet, um, the last meeting, and they're just concerned that they ask for it every year, and I, they understand this is unusual year. Um, they decided in March, you know, to send a formal letter, but they wanted to review it at their last meeting and approve it before it went out. And, um, they just want to make sure that you keep that in mind, because it is a 1982 plan.
Okay. And the next item is the, the library, and typically, historically, we have, um, we have provided $25,000 in funding to the library. Um, in 2020, it is budgeted to come out of the special use sales tax and designated to specifically be used for library building maintenance. Um, you can see that I, I do not have that, um, slotted going forward out of the, the capital projects, because I, I am unsure if, if the intent is to only fund building maintenance, which would, would allow it to be funded out of special use sales tax, or if it is intended to be for helping with operating costs of the library, in which case it would be more suitable to be funded out of the general fund. Louis, do you have a question?
And do you receive any guidance from the library board with regard to that?
I, I did last year. So I, I have not had a chance to meet with Jerry this year. Um, however, last year, their, their line item for maintenance in their budget was the $25,000, and, and that is how we substantiated, um, that, that that would be appropriate in 2020. Um, I, Kelly, I believe they have sent their, their budget. Is that correct? But I, I just have not had a chance to look at it.
Yes, they have.
So, so I'll know more once I, I dive into that, that budget as well.
Lacy, was that $25,000, was that an increase over previous years? You have any idea?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I know there was, uh, we had some discussions concerning the library, and it was, uh, the responsibility of, uh, major repairs would of course fall on the city, but as far as minor repairs, uh, there was money set aside for them to take care of those initial problems that would surface from time to time. Uh, so I, I was thinking this was. So I was thinking this was what that dollar amount was based upon. But I could be wrong.
I am unsure. I will make a note to look into to library funding.
I think they were to handle light replacement and minor repairs, but the major repairs were coming from city funds. But the way you're talking about using the special use, that that becomes a building major maintenance fund makes good sense. And what we have to start looking at is the maintenance that we're going to be facing at each of our major buildings. And some of it is quite significant that, you know, a boiler, an air handler, a chiller goes down, it's going to be significant unless you put that into a fund to prepare yourself. And, you know, that could be a building maintenance fund. So each year, you're looking at potential for each building to be maintained. You don't have to look at building up 100,000 for each building, but you're drawing enough that when a major event occurs and you have to replace it, that you have enough money on hand to do that. So the way you're moving it from there into a maintenance fund starts setting that track that we can have a significant amount of money to handle the major issues wherever they occur.
Yes.
Kelly has mentioned some of the costs here that Memorial Hall that we need to start considering. They always seem to sneak up, you know? It's like you get a new car and the tank is full of gas. When do you watch the gas gauge? Do you fill it up on empty or half-full? You know, and it all affects how much money it's going to take you at that time. And that's what these maintenance issues, they're all big tickets. Some of them, 50,000 is the cheapest that you get at, but where do you get 50,000 out of a tight budget unless you've planned for it?
We've had issues with both the boilers and the chillers in this building within the last 12 months that's been rather expensive. And then another thing that will creep up on you is elevator. Sometimes we have some issues with that and those are usually very expensive to repair as well. It's just those quality of life items are getting to the age that they're needing some additional maintenance, additional funds to keep them going.
And with a maintenance program, you can stagger the maintenance that you're not hit with all of them at once. That's like we talked about with the swimming pool pump, by having a backup repair that you can exercise them and do preventative maintenance with that.
Which we do have now.
It did come in.
The pump has, the old pump was repaired and the new pump has came in. So we recovered on that item, so.
Okay, well, that's actually a very nice segue into Memorial Hall projects. The, what I have done so far is kind of going on that same theme of slotting monies for repair and necessary maintenance and upgrades year over year. So I have budgeted facility improvements for $50,000 every year. And then you can see in, so that would be 2023, I do have a million-dollar project in here. Hopefully, something that we could maybe look at, special use sales tax funds or something like that for, and that is the elevator and ballroom project.
And we've talked about that for several years, that that floor is not accessible. You know, it has two levels of windows. It would be prime space if we could access it. Because we don't have an elevator there, we can't utilize it. And of course, it hasn't been remodeled because it wasn't accessible. So it just needs upgrades and access and that would open up some flexibility, additional flexibility for this facility. It would be a beautiful place to have wedding receptions or things like that. That's, you know, it's just got some ambiance that you don't have when you're in the basement of this floor that you could do, so it would open up some opportunities.
Okay, at the park, we have projects, facilities and grounds projects scheduled every year. Let me go over to my data to tell you exactly what they are. So some of them include the shelter house roof replacement, golf course greens and fountain lighting, AC and electrical indoors at the 4H building. That's actually 2022. So 2021 focuses on the shelter house roof replacement and golf course greens and fountain lighting upgrades. And I specifically, I have started budgeting projects like this in more general terms. So that is why under the projects, you just see a designation of facilities or grounds. Because I have noticed that, you know, a lot of times we are just up against certain circumstances where it would make more sense to move a certain project up or delay a certain project once we actually get down to doing it. So that is why you see the more general terms. And then in this notes section is the intended purpose of kind of what idea we have going into that right now.
Lacey, that makes a lot of sense to me. We are 18 months out from the end of 2021 and things change.
Yes.
The world changes and we cannot necessarily have a perfect crystal ball look at the future. So we have to have some flexibility so that we can respond to what the world throws at us.
Yes. Okay, in the police department, we have, I've worked with Jerry to determine his vehicle needs year over year. And due to the, you know, the high use of the vehicles, we've come up with a number to replace each year going forward. So that is what you see here. And there are some equipment needs next year and some software needs as well.
So the, Lacey, the 90,000, would that be a replacement of two vehicles?
Let me look. Jerry, I believe it was typically two patrol vehicles and then in other years, correct, a detective vehicle, two and two each year alternating? Okay, yes, so alternating between patrol and detective vehicles two a year. Next, we have the sanitation department and this is just budgeted for lease payments that we have. I'm going to switch back over to this data view for a moment while we talk about the water and sewer. Sorry, give me just a second. Okay. So for 2021, we've got the new water loan and a new sewer loan on here and a potential KDHE water loan as well. And the equipment that we have budgeted is camera equipment.
Is that because it was taken out of 2020? Or did I? You've got sewer camera equipment in 2020 of 80,000 and equipment in 2021?
Let me look, that might be a mistake. I will make a note to check that with Terry. Maybe I have the wrong description. I will confirm. My, I would assume that I probably have the wrong note in the 2021 column and that is intended for something else. And then also in the water sewer fund, we have traditionally transferred $500,000 to a capital improvement fund. And this is, you know, capital improvement, large maintenance, things like that. I mean, you're talking if a pump goes out mid-year, you could be looking at $300,000, $500,000 to replace a single pump. So this is just uses our reserve fund.
So the capital projects from the sewer and water treatment loan, those are listed in a different category?
Those would be included. The actual projects included under those loans are not specifically outlined in this file purely due to the fact that this is a specific budget file and the monies that are going out for that are the payment on the loans. So what you see in here is the loan payment and not necessarily the cost per project.
Okay.
Okay. Under special improvements, I have the transfer to five mils to capital reserve each year. Airport operations, condemnations, the firework display, which I am seeing now that I don't have going out, going out into the future. And I believe the reason I don't have it there in, you know, 2021 and forward is I'm trying to get away from putting items in the capital project that are not capital in nature. I mean, a firework display does not meet any of the requirements of a capital expenditure. And so in 2020, 2021 going forward, it will be shown in just the operating budget because it is not a capital expenditure. Okay, moving down to the street projects. In here, you will see, we typically apply for some KDOT project every year and our typical match is $100,000. So instead of listing a specific project on here that we don't know what we will be receiving or what we may even be applying for, I've got it listed just as KDOT project with $100,000 being funded towards whatever KDOT project is going on that year for the next six years. I do have ADA improvements. There's some flexibility within here. We typically do an annual ADA project that is tied in with our street projects. So that is what I've got here in this first line, that is about $100,000 a year. And then the miscellaneous ADA, my intent is to use that for the additional items that seem to pop up throughout the year. And then we've got, let's see, some lease payments. We do have the residential sidewalk replacement. Again, this, in my experience over the last year, some of these funds kind of end up rolling into your street projects because when you go along and you fix your streets, then you are, then you have to do your ADA work. And oftentimes, there are sidewalks along those corridors that also need replaced. So that can be used for those purposes. If the funds are not needed to be used in conjunction with those large projects, we could look at doing some sort of sidewalk replacement, just sidewalk replacement type project.
On East Main, it'd be the 200 block across from the courthouse. Sidewalks are really in poor condition there. Is that identified as a capital project or is that, would that come out of your lump? Your lump sum for sidewalk replacement or?
If there is not a street project for the adjoining, the adjacent roadway, the funds would be, would come out of the sidewalk replacement program. However, I will say, for example, last year, I can't recall of any specific sidewalk projects that we did out of those funds, but we used, we lumped it in with our ADA projects and street projects that had specifically sidewalk replacements, not ramps or anything like that, but sidewalks that needed to be replaced as part of those projects. And we used those funds for that.
We need to look at how we can get it scheduled and visually coming in and out of town. It really is an eyesore that we need to address in one of our street projects or just as a separate project. A lot of curbs deteriorated, sidewalk had significant cracks, grass growing and.
We've had some interest, inquiries about that, taking that building out on the corner of Sixth and Main, the old Dollar Store. So I don't know if that might be a part of a project like that also. But just to give you a heads up, we have had some interest in removing that and putting something else there. I don't know if anything will occur with it, but we have had inquiries.
The rest of the? The rest of the block east is really, really deteriorated.
So to follow up on that question then, so on the $50,000, that is for residential sidewalk replacement. In the past, we have been pretty much expending that amount of money where it's not, it's not a ramp and it's not tied to an ongoing road project because there are other neighborhoods where part of the sidewalks are, you know, in pretty bad shape. So I guess my question is, have we expended those funds in the past that weren't specifically tied to something else?
Well, we've had some ADA specific complaints and I believe they've done some sidewalk work due to that. Is that correct, David?
Yeah, very minimal, but some. Most of it, like Lacy said, has been rolled over into the street overlay project in those ADA. To get the funds, to get the most milling and re-paving that we could get now.
But the ones that aren't tied to those projects have been, I know that we had at least one ADA accessibility issue that they addressed.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
My comment would be that it seems that if we are going to put a $50,000 capital project in here for residential sidewalk replacement, it would be worthy of having a plan to expend it for that reason. Even now, you don't have to walk very far in the city of Independence to find a sidewalk that is in need of repair or correction. Even just immediately north of me here, across the street, the sidewalk has buckled and I believe that it is a significant trip hazard. We're lucky that we haven't had someone fall and hurt themselves. So it's, it's worthy of a plan.
And David has a list of locations that we've had complaints on. I used to maintain it, but when he took over ADA, he has that list. So we have a list of locations.
Thank you.
David, can you clarify for me? So if we go in and there's, say there is a trip hazard in one sidewalk panel in the middle of the block, by going in and fixing that sex, a small section of sidewalk, does it kick in other ADA requirements to where we would have to expand the scope of the project to meet ADA requirements, for example, along an entire block?
It sort of gets a little technical and Leonard can help me a little bit, but.
Because it's, it's been my understanding that we've kind of shied away from some of those projects because once you go in and you try to fix a piece that you would think is not going to be very expensive, it triggers other, other things to where a small project is now a huge project?
It very well could be. And Leonard, do you have a comment?
In, the ADA doesn't address residential sidewalks. Just the curb ramp is required, but we're not mandated to provide accessible routes or sidewalks through the residential area. So.
Okay.
And you're right, Lacy, there is that borderline that we can do maintenance, but you can't do maintenance in sections that you replace the whole block so that you're circumventing ADA compliance.
Yeah.
So we can do maintenance on the ADA sidewalks that are required for accessible route and patch one or two joints and we're okay. But if it's like, we're only going to do half the block this time or fourth and then do it in phases and in the end, we're going to have it all done, then we're circumventing the ADA and we're violating statute. So.
Even if it's in a residential area, correct?
Do what?
Even, even if that example is in a residential area?
And it depends, you know, of course, the grade of the sidewalk. Because the sidewalk is, the residential area isn't mandated, but it just level and provide drainage and that. It depends on the natural slope too.
Okay.
But we are mandated to provide ramps when we put in a new street or modify a mill and overlay a residential street. Then we have to put the curb ramps if the sidewalk is, if the natural terrain is compliant.
So that clarification, that is typically why we are rolling that into those mill and overlay projects that are done throughout the residential type streets in the area is that we feel like we get a bigger bang for our buck because we are mandated to do those. And instead of going in and spot fixing, you know, some areas, we are able to upgrade an entire area in conjunction with a project.
Yeah, because we get it, some of this, Louis, we get into is the old sidewalks are narrow and the newer ones that we put in are wider. It just really, if somebody calls and they are handicapped in a wheelchair and we have ramps at both corners, sometimes they'll have a big, like Dean said, displaced piece of sidewalk. And we will go in and spot fix that so they can access the ramps. But for the most part, we try to, and the residents get upset, but it is their responsibility to fix that. And the other thing, truly $50,000 sidewalks doesn't go very far. I am shocked. I don't even know if that would do a block in some of our areas. So, and this list is huge. So it would, maybe that's something in the sales. I mean, if the city truly wanted to do a sidewalk project for the community, it would be a big project, I think, Leonard. I mean, you would have a, I mean, there are sidewalks all over town that are a mess. And it would be a big project. And I'm just amazed, the projects we do, the cost to fix a little sidewalk, what that cost is.
And our city code does state that. It is the property owner's responsibility, whether they're residential or commercial, to keep the sidewalk in repair. And the code actually says the city can condemn the sidewalk. If they don't fix it, then repair it and assess it back to the property owner. That's what our current code states.
I don't think people understand that part, that it is actually their responsibility. Because when I have taken calls from people, their assumption is that's city's responsibility to maintain the sidewalk in front of their property. So I'm glad that people that are listening in and get a chance to watch this later, they'll understand that as to why, why it is and explain that. But that brings up another question I have. Because we're talking about spot fixing sidewalks. You know, we spot fix roads, potholes. And just to basically eliminate as many potholes as we can. But traditionally, what happens every time we get heavy rainfall, all those, all that asphalt, excuse me, basically washes out. And you especially see it at intersections. There's one that's, it's not, they're not excessively deep, but it's, I think it's one I turned in on North 11th. And I can't think of the street. Now, anyway, but when you cross that intersection, whether you're headed east or west, that you would basically fill in that hole where the, where the street and the block meet. You would fill in both sides of that because there's so many potholes across that. Is there a way that when we do our mill and overlay projects, that some of those worst areas, rather than putting asphalt, filling those holes with asphalt, that we could do a, like a patch over that to, on some of the worst ones? Because I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm not in the streets as far as the composition and all that. So why I'm asking the question.
Right. What we're using now is cold patch. And when we do an asphalt program or a plant fires up near us, yes, that can be cut out and hot asphalt, you know, do a deeper cut and it will stay a lot longer.
Okay. Well, that might be something that we might want to look at down the road. Some of the worst ones to where you're looking at.
Yeah, there's several of them.
Some of them that are pretty bad. So maybe that's someone that we could identify and then direct repairs in that nature. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
I will say the concrete utility cuts that we've had done, I think those have came out very nice.
Oh, they look great. Look great.
And that's, that's been a good program because we can get those fixed in a quicker manner and by a contractor that's more able to do, you know, a better job on that than what we can do in-house. So.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that, you know, not only continue, but somewhere down the road, if there's a lot more identified, we can maybe allocate resources to that because it is a good patch. And it's clean. And I know people appreciate when they no longer have to drive over something that's, that's been, you know, causing their tires to go out of alignment every time they drive over it. So, anyway, thank you.
Would it be agreeable to you all if I moved the $50,000 that is, is in the residential sidewalk replacement to the annual ADA project? Because in truth, it is all connected. You can't really have one without the other. And maybe that will clear up some confusion on, you know, why are you not coming into my, my neighborhood where there is no street project going on and fixing sidewalks? Do you think that would be helpful?
I think it would. Because you really need, the curb ramp is usually six or eight feet long, just right going through the curb to transition there. But you've got to have money to tie in. And sometime that goes back to a joint or to level out or to meet the new angle. So I think those intersections are a prime concern. And it would be more appropriate to put it in with, with the ADA.
Okay. That's what I'll plan on doing. I will, I will take out that residential sidewalk replacement program and move it into ADA, the annual ADA project. And we'll just be sure to note, or if you get a question on it, that that does not mean we are not doing any residential sidewalk replacements. We are just doing them in the locations that adjoin a street project.
Lacy, we might want to discuss that, the EDA potential grant also that we talked to Susan about yesterday.
You want me to come? Sure.
Okay. Relating to the Whiskey Creek, one project that was potentially identified was in the area of Catalytic and that, that area over there doing a drainage improvement to help that water flow. A lot of that old infrastructure that was put in years ago has collapsed as David showed in his PowerPoint that we did last year, I believe. There is a grant program through, it's an economic development grant. It's called an EDA grant. And it pays for 80% of a project. We have identified a project and with the engineering contingency, the estimate's over $800,000. The city would pay 20% of that.
It's $160,000.
I'm sorry?
$160,000 would be the city's match.
Yeah, $160,000 would be the city's match. And we're needing to get that in within the next 30 days. They're going to do some awarding of some things in May, but they may have some additional funding left over. And they suggested that we get it in in case there's additional funding left over, that that project may be able to get funded. And it would improve some of the issues we're having with, with the Whiskey Creek. I mean, it's not the $7 million fix for the pond on Oak Street, but it is something that would help us work towards doing something with that drainage issue. And so part of that, we found out yesterday, is you have to go through an RFQ process for engineering. So we'd have to do that quickly, get that done so that they can prepare the, the actual estimates in the preliminary engineering report to submit that application. But I plan to bring that to you next week on the agenda to see about moving forward. But that will also affect our budget because we would have to come up with that $160,000 match. And Lacy, I don't know what area you were suggesting on that one, if it was approved.
What do you mean, what area?
Well, what area, what, what fund would you pay for the city's match out of?
I would have, I would have to take a look.
So that, that is a potential project that we're looking at. We've been working with Susan Gelmour at the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission on it. And she has had emails in and it's, it's taken her a while, you know. They've been so busy with the, her contacts on the federal level, been so busy with other grant programs. It's been a little slow getting feedback. But we did get an email over the weekend and then we had a conference call with her yesterday on it.
That, that sounds like a good project because we've had a, we've had a study and people have asked, where are we moving? Considering the studying that we've already paid for. And this would be a good opportunity if we could find the money or reallocate money from something that we were going to spend on to this particular project to show that not only have we made investment in the, in the study for the Whiskey Creek situation, but we are moving forward to try to make some correction to possibly alleviate some flooding in that particular area or reduce, you know, potential flooding where we can. So that would be a good first step, in my opinion.
And she thought it's probably a long shot, but we might as well go ahead and try. But she said they're doing another round in November, but they don't know, or in October, I believe. But they're not sure if they'll have funding left. But if we've already applied, then we can reapply. And then you've, you know, because you, they already have your application, they're already aware of the project. A lot of it is like, if they have a project and somebody wants a certain amount of money and their project doesn't take all of those funds, then they have leftover funds. And it's those leftover funds that we might be able to secure. Because everything that's been applied for so far will take up all the funding. But some of those projects don't end up coming in at that amount. And they said, they actually consider, you know, if it's less than $1 million, they consider it a small project on this program. So.
So we'd be a good filler.
So they thought, yeah, it would be a good fill if they had a little extra funds and they could slide that project in. So that's what they suggested that we do.
So with the Whiskey Creek study then, would that enhance our prospects as far as getting this grant? Because we've identified source problems.
Yes.
So, so that would be documented with, when we apply for this grant to maybe increase our chances for getting that money?
This, this grant is business related. So you have to show the impact on those, those businesses and how that could impact them, their ability to operate or how that could affect them. And, and so that's kind of the angle that this, this grant program goes off of. It's, it's directly related to helping businesses.
So, so to answer the, the previous question on funding, the most appropriate funding source would be economic development funds because this is an, a economic development grant. It is, it must specifically be tied to economic development.
So would this be one where those businesses affected, they would be, it would be beneficial for them to submit a letter like we've done on Maple?
Yes. And we would need to acquire some easements to do some, some of this drainage work on property owned by one of these businesses as well. So it would be a partnership.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a five-minute recess?
Sure. That'd be fine. Commissioner Green?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Take a vote then, all favor of a five-minute recess, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We can hear you when you use that mic.
We have reached our five-minute break limit. And now we will resume session. Lacey, do you want to continue?
Yes, I think all we have left is the zoo. So, I will, I think it's sometimes easier to see these specific projects on this view. So, in 2021, we have exhibit updates and facility updates. So, when I spoke with Barb a few weeks ago, she indicated that her intentions for 2021 were glass repair at the Bear Cougar and Snake Exhibits. And then, the facilities portion would be restrooms at Kitty Land. And if you look at the six-year budgeting projections, you can see that, again, I did more general projects such as fencing, exhibit updates, facility updates to, again, give ourselves a little bit more flexibility if different needs arise once we get to the actual budget year, since we are planning in advance. But at least with this file, you'll basically be able to see what we've got up and coming over the next six years. Are there any specific questions?
Lacey, I don't have a specific question, but I've been trying to, as we look at the bottom line there, the grand total for capital expenditures, I've been trying to rationalize the $3.5 million drop from 2020 to 2021. And it looks like a lot of it was in the grant funding that we received during the 2020 year.
Yes.
Was, and that was exceptional? Or was that something we could potentially look forward to?
We could potentially look forward to those. It could be that, you know, for example, we had a lot of FEMA grants that were potentially, we could have received in 2020. Honestly, I will probably move those out to 2023. It's not realistic that we'll see any of that in 2020. So, that would be, you know, all this high-service walled lift station, those types of projects. And then, it also could be that I have entered the city match portion, but left out, for example, on these street ones, I can see that I've got KDOT project on here for the city's match, but it looks like I probably don't have a corresponding line item for KDOT's portion of that that would show, you know, the total project is $400,000. It looks like currently, 2021 just shows the city's portion of that. So, as I work through this file, I can update that and add in those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
The Water Sewer Administration, the new sewer loan, new water loan. The $200,000, is that loan payment or is that projects?
Say that again, which ones? Those $200,000 are loan payments.
Okay.
And in 2021, there are three sets of those.
Have we been awarded the new sewer loan?
We haven't gotten anything back from the state yet. The application was submitted, but we haven't gotten anything back. The new water loan is on that, where they suggested that we do a Phase Two, some additional projects that, because of all the forgiveness and things that they're doing, they thought that would be a good idea. And PEC is preliminarily doing some work and checking with the state on that, so.
And that is, that's actually designated as the potential KDH of the water loan. I will update the naming on this one that is titled.
So, that's the current one?
New Water Loan. I'll put the water loan project number in there so that we know specifically which one we're talking about.
And Lacey, could you identify, I've slept since then, could you identify what that is? Is that, this is second phase at the water plant?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. That's kind of what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
And I do have an update on Phase One City Hall. I just got an email from Justin to see the status. They repaired two triple arch windows this week, so that makes 12 to 14 that have been repaired. That's the framing around to get it ready for the installation. And then, the rest of the upper floors will be done along with the window installation. They will likely have to remove the basement windows in order to change out the lentils. And also, he just got a message back from the window sub that says now the windows are 10 to 12 weeks out. So, that's going to push that project back.
As far as the roof goes, where has that been completed? Are they still, they're still working to complete the final portion of that, right? Because we've reviewed that here in the past meeting or two.
They've done quite a bit of roof repair work. Let me pull up the last progress report here. Okay. Yeah, I know on the May 6 progress report, they were still working on some of that. But I haven't gotten a progress report since May 6.
The delay on the window would be primarily COVID-related as far as maybe factories being shut down or?
They indicated there was some COVID-related things, but I don't know if that's primarily the reason. Do you know, David, did they say?
The materials, some of the materials are delayed because of COVID or manufacturing of the windows.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, does that conclude your?
Yes, I would like to ask one specific question regarding the direction of some economic development funds and your thoughts on this. You know, we talked about that potential grant for economic development in the Whiskey Creek area. But additionally, through our strategic planning session, we identified the need for wayfinding and signage in Independence. And so, when preparing this spreadsheet, you know, that is what I had in mind for our economic development projects. And I'd just like some feedback since we, you know, yes, we are holding off on capital projects and things like that until we have a better understanding of the budget. But would it be agreeable to say that, you know, if we can still plan on moving forward with those wayfinding signs and what we established as being a priority in our meeting? And if we come across the opportunity for this grant funding, that we would be able to amend the economic development budget to spend down some of the cash value? Or because there, we don't have enough budgeted, for example, for the entire match for that grant? Are we, is your intent to do that instead of what we had slotted at the beginning of the year or in addition to? Basically, is the wayfinding signage still a high priority for us?
I think it is, but the Whiskey Creek drainage would supersede wayfinding signage. Because the area that's going to be addressed has a large section that's collapsed. And it would provide, I think, some improvement to drainage. So, I think that grant would take precedent over wayf...
Agreed.
I'm not for sure.
Does that answer your question or?
Not really.
That's what, I didn't think it did. What was your question?
You know, we, basically, I'm... If we were to get that grant, would you want to amend the budget for the entire amount of the grant and still proceed with our other intended projects through economic development? Or would you want to cut other things to have less of a dollar impact by doing, by going forward with the grant? Does that make sense?
In the 2020 budget?
Yes. Well, it would really impact 2021.
I just have a comment with regard to wayfinding signs and how it plays into a concept that I'm working on that, emerging from COVID-19. We really want to position ourselves as a destination for the entire population in the region as we have, if we take the steps that are necessary to position ourselves as regionally as a place for, you know, retail, as for services, those kinds of things. And I could see where that would play very well into that positioning. So, I would favor keeping those types of projects current or more recent than pushing them out. The wayfinding signs.
And the reason I ask is because we are at a point with our wayfinding signage that, you know, if we did move forward with projects in 2020, it could be ready to go. But if our intent is not to keep that as a high priority and not do it, then we would hold off on it.
But it depends on the budget of the way, and can... And how extreme of a project it has become.
Right.
You know, there's wayfinding signs that could address some of the issues, but then it can go too far, too.
Absolutely. There are a lot, and it will be phased, for sure.
See, I haven't seen the concept of how many. So, to give a definite answer, I agree with what Dean. We need to start doing something, but we've got to stay within our budget, too. So, to go crazy with wayfinding sign, you know, it's...
My question really is, is it still a priority? Which I'm hearing is yes within relative constraints. And that is what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I understand what you said with, we may have limited funds to proceed with that, but we don't want to drop it entirely. But we have identified something else that is probably more critical.
Yes.
And I think we all understand that. So, yeah, I think so. We will do, attempt to do something that may not be on the scale that we had intended to, but as long as funds are available, we can find that funding, yeah.
And I do believe it can be phased.
Yes.
And we do have a design, a new design, to share with you when we get to that point. We did a crowd-spring contest.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that is all that I have unless there are other questions.
We had the map with the street. Did you identify anything about those?
Let me...
Where that was figured into the budget or?
So, the file that I shared with each of you that's on the legal paper has... This is the same information that was presented at the strategic planning session. So, it is just our list of projects that we think could... Sorry, one second. Kelly, you did send me that this morning, right?
I sent you the image.
On South Park Boulevard, Edison to Cherry. That's a concrete street.
Right.
I know it's got some cracks in it, but it's still fairly good. Can we maybe address some streets that are asphalt-related? And the concrete's going to be pretty low maintenance. Once we put asphalt, then now we've thrown it into a maintenance schedule unless it's really bad.
Well, it's just a preliminary list. I mean, we can change it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know.
But Jim Wright just called me from the county, and they are going out for bids first week in June.
What are they going out for bids?
We need to get on board with them or not. Spend the money.
I mean, I would say yes, that we move forward with the Millan Overlake project.
How much money do we have in 2020 for that?
$285,000, I believe.
And this is the list for 2021, right?
No, this is 2020.
This is 2020.
Yes, the map.
Not all of, we will not be able to do every project on this list.
These are just future streets we have identified. We haven't determined, you know, it all depends on the funding.
That's what I was trying to tie in a handout with the 2021 budget and what we're looking at.
Yeah, we haven't done our 2020 project either. So, this is probably 2020, maybe 2021 also, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, we won't get all of these this year. I mean, that's why we go out to bid with the county, we'll get a price, we'll put a figure to these, and then bring it back to you and you decide.
And get the better cost estimates.
So, what we're going to get is an amount of asphalt with their budget on. How many lineal feet, how many tons?
We'll get a price per ton. And then I'll give you a figure for each one of these, and you tell us what you want to do.
Okay.
And the budget is $285,000. And then, in addition to that...
$285.
Yes, $285,000. In addition to that, we pair our annual ADA project alongside that. And so, because these projects, that's why ADA costs are also identified on this. So, that's in addition to the ADA costs. So, $285,000 budgeted for the street cost portion of it in 2020. And this list includes $505,000 of street costs estimated for this entire list.
Thanks. That's why I'm just trying to compare where we were with the map, if that related to 2021 or...
Our hope is to pick projects off of that map. If, you know, it is good to know if there are specific ones that you do not want to do.
Set us your priorities in town and how we sequence. Set us your priorities in town and how we sequence. Thank you. Any further questions regarding the screens or should we move back to our stations?
I'm good to move.
I am good to move, Mayor.
Okay.
Same here.
No more here, Lacy, then we'll relocate. Okay, if that concludes then our discussion concerning the future capital projects, then we move on to our, our next item, item for adjournment. Is there any other commissioners before we go to adjournment? You got any comments, any questions?
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Kelly?
Nope, we're good.
Lacy?
I'm good.
Okay, then I make a motion that we adjourn.
You second it.
A motion and a second, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Lacy.